Okay, just like to welcome everybody to the Worcester School Committee meeting.
Recording in progress.
Please stand if you can and for the Pledge of Allegiance, I mean for the Pledge of Allegiance and the National Anthem.
Hi. Representatives of the United States of America and to the Republic of Worcester State, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, endless.
And for the National Anthem, we have Jayden Bordis and Daniel Park, who are both seniors at Burnco Senior High School. Make those mics on.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there? Or say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Nice job, Jayden and Daniel. Okay. A roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Here.
Member Biancheria?
Here.
Member Benanda?
Here.
Member Guardiola?
Here.
Member Johnson?
Here.
Member McCullough?
Here.
Member Roy?
Here.
Member Mailman?
Here.
Mayor Petty?
Are here. Okay, we have the consent, we're on E for the consent agenda. Roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Here. Yes.
Member Biancheria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes, we're on G, which was held to approve the second meat breakfast, I'm sorry, the second meal, breakfast, lunch, snack, and adult meal prices for the 24-25 school year. We can approve. Member Johnson, followed by member Biancheria.
Thank you to the chair, to the administration, I just have a few questions in regards to this. In regards to the proposed price for breakfast, lunch, and snack, how is that calculated? What formula was used in order to calculate that price?
Madam Superintendent?
Through the chair, I believe this is through DESI, DESI gave us the criteria for this.
So DESI set the price?
Yes. For our district? That is my understanding.
And so we're looking to approve this tonight, has this been happening in schools since the beginning of the year? Or is this something that's going to start after we kind of go through it and approve this?
It would start after, as far as I understand, I thought this was going to actually go to FOG, so I'm not sure if this got changed.
Is there a date on this? You can set it to FOG if you'd like, okay.
I got it right there. Was it on for it to be filed, approved and filed, I thought?
Yeah, approved and filed, yeah.
That's why I was asking questions now, so.
Correct, during agenda review, we had it on for FOG, so I don't know when this got changed.
We can turn it around quickly, right? Okay.
You mind if I just finish my question?
No.
So it's not happening currently?
As far as I am aware, it is not.
And then moving forward, once this is done, just how are we going to communicate this out to the district and out to the parents? What's the plan in regards to that?
We would put a formal memo together, we would put it out to the community, we would make it part of the student handbook moving forward.
Student handbook, okay. My last question is, is so how, in regards to this, how are we going to handle our considered homeless students? Students who potentially are in foster care, group homes, or anything like that, who may not have the funding or the ability to access money to get an extra lunch? How is that going to be worked out in schools? How are we gonna, I guess, supplement?
So, through the chair, the plan was to not let any child go hungry if they wanted additional meals, and so we would find a way internally to cover that cost.
And I actually have one more question in regards to this. So whatever the money is that comes of this, of any student, where does that money go? Like who holds that money and then what is done with the money that is collected due to students getting extra meals and snacks in school?
Through the chair, my understanding is we return back to the nutrition services funding. This is something that is required through a compliance review of the district.
So we'll go back into our nutrition funding source?
That is my understanding.
Okay. Can we just get, I just want to get clarification on?
We'll get clarification on all of these questions.
Appreciate it, thank you, that's it.
Thank you, member Biancheria?
Thank you, from reading this notice, it says student handbook and policy, EFD, have recently been modified to reflect the charge for second meals. So it's already in the handbook, it shows the dollar amount that is stated here, is that correct?
Madam Superintendent?
Through the chair, I believe that we are prepared to put it in the handbook, the handbook was approved by the committee last school year to move forward, so if that indeed is in there. But I think that this is in addition to the handbook to move forward.
Then that's not what this reads at all, it says student handbook and policy have recently been modified to reflect the change, the charge for the second meals. And then it reads the school committee establishes the rate to be charged for the second meal, and I don't recall any discussion in reference to this. And I was at a neighborhood meeting last night where Senator Moore discussed the funds that are being provided to schools. So there is no cost for student meals.
Through the chair, that is for the first meal, that is for the first meal.
That is for the first meal only.
Correct, again, this seems to be a clerical error because this was supposed to go to FOG. So that the committee can discuss these details and set the price for the second meal. I would respectfully request that this, we go to FOG so committee can do their due diligence.
Then I make a motion that we have this in FOG so we can then have a discussion sooner than later in reference to this. That would be my motion for this particular piece, so we then are not filing it and not voting on it tonight, correct?
No, what?
We're not filing it and we're not voting on it this evening.
No, I just said earlier, yeah, I just said earlier.
That would be my motion to have it sent to FOG.
Member Benanda?
I know the federal government has said that we can only get the first meal free. However, there are so many students that there's not enough food on the first meal, and especially on a Monday, after they've been home for the weekend. That first meal really doesn't sustain them. Second of all, some of the students in the high school have lunch starting at 10:30 and they play sports. And by the time it gets to sports, they're really hungry, and so usually there wasn't snack provided. Donna Lombardi was also exploring, we used to give supper at some of the schools, so the students were, and that was also paid for by the federal government. Nope, Mr. Allen, is he here? I'm just wondering if, when it does go to FOG, can we explore how we used to be able to do that? Because they used to be able to get breakfast, lunch, and then like a four o'clock supper, and it was all, you know, through funding, through USDA. Because I think that the price, even a dollar, kids don't even have a dollar for a snack, and they get really hungry when they have lunch so early. So I hope when it goes to FOG, we can look at some other way to solve this than these prices. In the past, prior to this, students could have a charge, like they would charge it, and then the charge would end up that we owed a lot of money. And so when we say like we'll try to cover the money for it, there are so many students that it actually adds up to a large amount of money if kids don't have the money that day and they want to charge it. So are they going to be allowed to still charge it or not? That's something I guess we'll discuss when it goes to FOG also.
Okay, so I'm sure we'll have that discussion. Uh, member Roy, followed by member McCullough?
I just have a quick question, we have our FOG meeting on Monday, will this be able, is there time enough to get this on the agenda for Monday?
What time is your meeting?
No. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, member McCullough?
I'll just say quickly, since this is going to FOG and we will discuss it there, I do know that the snack and supper program is continuing this year because with the DESI requirements, simply people that are hosting those after-school programs have to do an online training, and once they're certified in that online training, they're then able to provide that meal and snack. I had a conversation with a school this week that is doing that, so that is still continuing, and we can get into more details during FOG when we meet on this, thank you.
Okay, so send that committee with the questions that have been asked and all those in favor, oppose or order. Okay, we have reported Superintendent. From here anywhere together, Superintendent Goldstein, 24-25. Madam Superintendent? Hang on for one second. Oh, did I miss the public comment? Oh yeah, okay, I did miss the public comment. I was looking at recognitions, okay.
Thank you.
I thought there was only one person, so I was gonna bypass it. So does your name, say your residence?
I would remind you about it, I need a time, Fred Nathan of Worcester. So under the approval of donations, if someone is willing to make a donation of any kind of money or item to the kids, I read here to consider approval, unless there is a very big hook attached to that donation, it should read instead to accept. Why do you always have to consider someone's donation? If it's helping out the kids of Worcester, I mean, I know Rome wasn't built in a day, but in that theory, if the school department depended upon like how Rome wasn't built in a day, they'd still be building it.
Okay, anybody else? Does your name, say your residence and item number?
Ambero Worcester Mast, just general comment, thank you to the administration for listening to the community in so many areas, better meals, after-school programs, bullying, just we're just, continue to be very grateful. Just this week, just some responses from the administration in response to parent needs were wonderful, thank you.
Does your name, say your residence and item number?
Hi, my name is Crystal Guzman, I'm from Worcester. I actually have, I have a total of six children, and three Worcester Public School graduates, three that are still in school. My twins are juniors at Worcester Tech, I have a Burnco High child, and I'll be honest with you, I'm honestly super excited about the new administration. I think it's going well, I think Mrs. Monarez and her team are doing quite well. My son came today, he's the one, he's a senior, and he says, I always have, as a Latin mom, I'm actually, I have food ready when they come home. Today, he says, Mom, I'm not hungry, I ate at school today, he says, weird enough, the food is getting better. I was like, okay, you know? Ms. Monarez, since the beginning, since she took office and she's been doing what she has to do, all she's done is listened to parents. It's been nothing but amazing, I do volunteer work to try to empower parents, to try to get people to start speaking up and to be able to advocate for themselves and the families, and I think that we're doing a great job. I think that we need to constantly be backing up our new administration. Once again, we asked for change a few years ago, and we're getting the change that we asked for. There's not an issue that has not been discussed, I mean, as far as the food, I mean, the food is going well. After-school program, that's being acknowledged, bullying is being acknowledged, I mean, what more can you want from a new administration? She's picking up old baggage, you know, it's crazy, you know, for us to assume that she is going to be able to work miracles or run circles around everything when she's one person and she has an amazing team standing behind her. We all need that team, and we all need to be supporting her. The child bullying is getting worked on, but once again, though, the adults are foolish right now. You know, we have some that are, you know, for, some of that are against, and it's just like, when does it end? When do we actually become a community? And thank you so much, Ms. Monarez, for all that you do in your administration, we really, really do appreciate you. And once again, as I said a couple of weeks ago, I apologize for those that have not grown up in the city of Worcester yet, to appreciate all that you're doing with your team, thank you.
Does your name, say your residence and item number?
My name is Esperance, and I'm a parent leader. I thank you for this opportunity to say thank you for everything. We appreciate all the work, support, your efforts to our kids, to our community, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mildred Martinez, resident of Harlow Street here in Worcester. I just would like to thank the superintendent for taking the time to meet with parent leaders such as myself and listening to our concerns, addressing them, really coming together and listening to the ideas that we bring to the table. It empowers, you know, us and gives us the feeling of being a stakeholder in our children's education, and we're very fortunate, so thank you so much. One of the biggest issues that us as parents, you know, have brought to the table is after-school programming, and it is being, you know, worked on, you know, transportation. You know, for parents, you know, like myself, that can't step away, you know, can't take a break, you know, in the middle of, you know, a workday to be able to transport a child to programming, and we appreciate that that's being, you know, addressed. You know, and just having those conversations and letting us, you know, kind of where we feel like the little people, even though, you know, our kids are the ones that all of these choices are being impacted. So thank you so much for letting us have a seat at the table, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, name and say your residence?
Lisa Ledbetter, new to Worcester, it'll be a year next month. I am here because knowledge is power, and as I've been associating with others within different community strengths, I've been misinformed as well as well-informed, especially by Superintendent Monarez. So I will be sitting in to get caught up, I do not have any children in the school system yet, but that is soon to come. And as I bring them into this school system, we're originally from Springfield, I'd like to get to know what is going on in the community. So that way I am well-informed and well-prepared for my children to excel in school, thank you.
Outset, anyone online?
No.
Outsets?
Oh, wait.
Out there, someone online? Dina Todeski?
Hi, good evening, can you hear me okay?
Yes, state your name and city.
Sure, my name is Dina Todeski, and I'm a resident of Worcester on Morgan Street, and I have two children. One is a recent grad from South High last June, and then is currently successful in high school, I'm in college. And the other is a seventh grader in the Goddard Scholars Program at Sullivan Middle School. And I just wanted to give another shout out along with these other parents here to to the superintendent and her team, it's always approachable and responsive. The communication at all levels has been wonderful and well-appreciated by all parents that I've talked to on a regular basis. Not only a parent, but a community advocate, I'm involved with some PTOs, and I'm also a family and community engagement specialist with Worcester Education Collaborative. The communication level has been extraordinary, and you can feel it in all the different realms. I attend the CPAC meeting, the special ed meetings, and they are, the teams coming from the administration have information and answers and are not dismissive to parents. It's incredibly helpful and welcoming. And also to echo, student lunches are well-appreciated across several different schools, I've talked to different folks and are very appreciative of that as well. And I just wanted to give a shout out to the superintendent and her team, they're just really remarkable and something to continue to enjoy, thank you.
Thank you. You all set, are nine, ten? Good, all right, so we'll close that portion, so we'll move on to the report of the superintendent, from here anywhere together. Superintendent's goal setting for 2024, 2025. Superintendent Monarez?
Thank you through the chair as we pull up the presentation. So tonight is the presentation on my proposed goals to the committee. As a reminder, this is one of the major responsibilities of a school committee member, is to set goals in preparation for evaluation at the end of the year. I'm just waiting for this, here we go, okay. So next slide, so tonight I will Okay, so I'll go ahead and go to the next slide, thank you. So tonight, most specifically, the committee members will learn how these proposed goals were created, determine the, how they will be evaluated, and understand the alignment between the goals, the Worcester Public Schools' promise or a strategic plan, and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education DESI's indicator rubric for the superintendent evaluation. So it's my goal for tonight that we leave this committee meeting all clear on what the goals are for this year, as it relates solely to my evaluation, not as it relates to all of the work going on in the district, because the goals are just one portion of a much broader stroke of what we're doing. So what we're going to, how you're going to evaluate me, how that aligns to the strategic plan, to make sure that we're still moving the strategic plan forward, or what we refer to as the Worcester Public Schools' promise, and how that aligns to the indicator for superintendent evaluation. So next slide is an image of reflection. And so when we look into the, our mirrors, our side view mirrors, we can see what's behind us, and that's what reflection is about, what has happened in the past. And when I looked at the feedback that was provided to me I'm getting some, I just want to make sure. There we go. When I looked at the feedback that was provided to me through the evaluations that were shared, the conversation that took place in July, no, I'm sorry, it was August, on my actual evaluation, and where we're going as a district, I walked away with the themes of we need to continue to align our work to the Worcester Public Schools' strategic plan or our promise to the community. This will be the first goal-setting period where we actually have an approved plan that the committee unanimously approved last December, so that's important. The feedback showed me that we need to continue to build and deepen coherence, alignment, and systems throughout the district so that more children are achieving and excelling, and that there continues to be these glimmers of possibilities and acceleration. I read that through the various comments that were provided in your feedback, and I see it when I visit our schools, and I hear it when I speak with parents. And I know that Worcester is moving in a direction, slowly but surely, we are moving in a direction of possibilities and acceleration. So what I'll be sharing with you is where I believe the district needs to go next. My first two years here were really based on building a foundation to work, to build off of, developing guidebooks, roadmaps. We made so many guidebooks and roadmaps, they became almost a little joke that, oh, we need a roadmap for that too. We developed monitoring systems because it doesn't help to put things in writing, but then we don't have a way to monitor it. In a district as large as ours, we need to have strong monitoring systems that are easily accessible, and so we've done that over the last two years in a variety of areas, in data, in our personnel systems, in our business office, we just have a lot more monitoring systems than previously. We developed a very strong instructional framework that is aligned to our vision of a learner, and we have very robust curriculum maps that will help our classroom teachers, our principals, and our professional learning time to really move the system. And so I like to think about the first two years was this idea of being an architect and developing a very strong foundation to them build upon. So the foundation is there, it feels strong, and we can continue to improve those, and now we put that, those, the structure on top of it to really accelerate. So that's where these goals came from. So the next slide is just a reminder to the committee that we do have a strategic plan. We say that this is our promise to our future, that there are six primary goals of, or big priority areas of the strategic plan, and within each one, there are a variety of promises. The goals that I'm presenting tonight are not aligned, are in, aligned to three of these big priorities. That does not mean that the district is not moving on the other areas, of course we are. We, and they overlap and they align in so many different ways. What this does mean is these are the areas, these are the priorities that I'm asking you to hold me accountable to moving the district. And I believe as these promises move forward, these priority areas, other areas will grow as well. So let me get into what those priorities are. Next slide, equitable resources and educational programming. So in this particular strategic plan priority, the goal or the aim that I am suggesting that my goal align to is aim one, enhance and provide equitable and consistent learning experiences to prepare scholars for lifelong success. This includes work around narrowing the opportunity gap for historically underserved youth, increasing seats in our advanced coursework, our Chapter 74 coursework, participating in pre-K programs, and increasing percentages. Now, I'm not suggesting that that's a variety of KPIs. The KPI that I am suggesting that would be directly linked to this particular aim would be to, well, actually, we'll get into it a little bit later, I'll hold on that. So that's the first one, equitable programs, equitable resources and educational programming, specifically looking at aim one. The next slide is an area that we need to continue to dig deeper into and get stronger in. This came out through the evaluation, and we agree that this is a continuous area of improvement. It's around acquiring and retaining talent. Specifically two aims in this area that I would link the goals to. Increase the diversification of staff to be more representative of our scholars, and increase the retention of staff to ensure access to high-quality instruction. So we want to diversify our staff. We believe that we can do that with our existing staff, with creating pipelines for our youth to go into education, and, and creating pipelines for, for those who are working with us to continue to grow through the system. And we want to retain those when we bring them in. We invest in them and we want to keep them. So we'll talk a little bit more about that in the next slide. That is the second priority area with those two aims as, as the focus areas for my evaluation that I am recommending. The next one is, continues to be a very big need in Worcester. And it's the area of modernization and safe facilities. And I again want to remind the committee and the community that the strategic plan is a collective plan that came from feedback from hundreds of members of the Worcester Public Schools' community, parents, staff, students. It covers the realm and modernized and safe facilities rose to the top. The two areas or aims that I'm suggesting that my goals be aligned to this time are to increase spending on facilities so we can better repair and maintain our schools, our grounds and our district buildings, and to increase responsiveness to repairs and maintenance of schools, grounds, and district buildings. We are a community that has beautiful older buildings and older buildings have great needs on a regular basis. And our students and our staff need to know that when they put in a, a need for an improvement at the school in some way or another, that we continue to get better in our responsiveness to repair. So that is another area that I have my goals linked to. Next slide. So I quickly went over the, the strategic plan and the three area, priority areas that I'm suggesting these goals be linked to. I recognize that these, this slide has a lot of language. It's okay, Mr. O'Brien, we can keep it there. So let me explain how they all work together. So each slide, as a superintendent, I'm required to have one district goal, one student goal, and one professional goal. Because Worcester Public Schools has such a great need for facilities, I actually will have two district goals in here and a student goal and a professional goal. The way that I organize this is I took the feedback, you saw the strategic plan areas I'm linking this to. And when, the goal you'll see is in that kind of teal color. I underlined the portions of the goal that is directly linked to the DESI rubric. So this is language that I lifted from the DESI rubric so that it's clear on what the rubric says and what I'm recommending. So goal one, acquire and retain talent. Ensure a district-wide system for recruitment, hiring, hiring and retention of a talented culturally and linguistically competent workforce through a culture of belonging and authentic engagement. This is actually very similar, if not exactly the same goal as last year because I don't think we've achieved it yet. This goal has a lot of meat involved in it. The evidence that I would like to recommend that we use to evaluate my achievement of this goal, when it comes to product, we brought a lot of people in this last year. We need to have a more comprehensive approach to onboarding. That's how we retain people. So when we bring them in, we want to set them up for success. And that's not just onboarding of our teachers, that's onboarding of our administrators, that's onboarding of a climate and culture assistant, of a dean. We want people to be successful. That's how we retain people and that's how they excel and therefore our children excel. So a comprehensive induction model is evidence that I would bring back to this committee as an example of achieving this goal. The next one, we want to, in terms of product, is a, to create and host Worcester Public School new staff affinity groups. Did that one not? There we go, thank you, you have moved it already. New staff affinity groups. And those groups would be based, people would self-select where they would go. But this is, these are like support groups to support our staff when they come to our schools and they start working in our system. And so I would bring evidence back of those new staff affinity groups, sample pieces of meetings that have held. And then finally, we have pipelines in place throughout our district, but they're not as formalized as we need them. And when you formalize something, then you, you have it codified in writing. You show how people can grow. I may start as a school bus monitor. And my goal is to be a classroom teacher. What might be my pipeline? How, how can I access that? What would that look like? I want to see that in writing so that when people come to work for us, they have different ways by which they can grow within our system. So those would be product evidence pieces I would bring to the committee to show evidence of this goal. In terms of the key performance indicators, so just a reminder to the committee, each priority area and each aim in the strategic plan, the Worcester Public Schools' promise, has key performance indicators, multiple ones. On this particular one, I focus specifically on the indicators of bringing people in and retaining them. So the language in the KPI says to, the, the KPI is the percentage of new instructional staff from underrepresented backgrounds. I'm saying we will continue to increase that. We will continue to increase percentage of new operational or non-instructional staff from underrepresented backgrounds. So our staff continues to start to mirror that of our youth. And then KPI number two is around retention and we want to retain those people. And we want to retain both instructional staff and our non-instructional staff year to year. So these are the areas that I am recommending to measure this particular goal. This is a, continues to be a heavy lift and in heavy need in Worcester Public Schools. I hear it from the youth, I hear it from the families, I hear it from staff. Everybody wants to get better in this area. So that is one of the goals that I'm recommending and how I would be evaluated on that one. We'll go to the next goal, which is also a district goal. Again, this is an additional goal that I'm adding to my plate, but it's a really important goal to the community, to the staff, and, and we don't want to take our eye off of this. You'll note that there is nothing underlined on this particular goal. That is because there is very little in the DESI rubric that speaks to facilities. But yet Worcester has such a grand need, I think it would be irresponsible not to call that out and, and continue to work for, towards that. So the goal reads, "Scale and Implement Facilities Improvement to Include Safety Protocols, Procedures, Monitoring and Allocation of Necessary Fiscal Resources Through an Equity Lens." The one piece of product evidence that I would bring back is a codified equity budget process. We know in Worcester Public Schools, we have a very strong, nationally-recognized budgeting process. I just want us to go one step further and say, alright, this is what we do for all. What might we need to do for the schools that need a little bit more? And how do we meet those needs in different ways? How do we put that into writing and continue, continue to get better on that? So that's the codifying of it. This would be the year to develop that. The following year would be the year to implement it and see how it works. That's the product evidence. In terms of indicator evidence, as I said, there's no specific language in DESI that relates to facilities the way that we are looking at them. So I'm, I kind of pulled from different areas. The KPI that we have is to ensure maintenance and operations cost ratio to the foundation budget allocation. So we want to make sure that we continue to budget for the facility needs and not use a lack of funding as an excuse not to provide facilities that our children and our staff deserve. So those are fiscal priority areas and that's, that's what we need to bring to you and you decide on that. So I want to continue to work on that. Increase the level of funding for facilities improvement, both at the local, state, and federal sources. I'm very grateful to our city manager for continuing to work with, work with us on this. And we will continue to get better as a community overall. The district doesn't sit separately from the city. We, we need to work in collaboration and again, our city manager sees the importance of that as well. The final two sets of KPI go with the fifth aim to improve, actually, it's the fourth aim. Improve work order response time and improve work order completion time. So we want to be responsive when the work orders come in. We may not be able to complete them right away. Sometimes we've got to order parts and those different kinds of things, but that we stay communicative and then we complete that. I don't want to go to a school and have a principal tell me, and this happens, that they've had some restrooms that have not been working for three years and they don't know what's going on and they haven't heard from facilities. That needs to stop. It's, it's got to be very frustrating for all involved, including our facilities. So communication's very, very important there. So that's the second district goal that I am recommending that the school committee hold me accountable for. The next slide goes into the student learning goal. On this one, you see underlined portions again. These, this language comes from a couple different places on the DESI rubric. The goal reads, "Lead Worcester Public Schools' learning community to define, refine, implement, and monitor culturally responsive policies and practices that acknowledge the diverse backgrounds, identities, strengths, and challenges of Worcester Public Schools' staff, caregivers, and scholars." This very much aligns with the diversification of the staff and the retention of the staff. This is a very heavy, meaty goal and, and a very aspirational goal. The product evidence that we would, that I am recommending that I would bring back, we are going to develop a curriculum bias tool. We're going to take our existing walkthrough forums and make sure that we have refined them for, so they, we create them on, through an equity lens. And we're going to create equitably, equity-based addendum for culturally sustaining, culturally, linguistically sustaining practices. So what does that mean? That means when we think about culturally and linguistically sustaining practices and policies in Worcester Public Schools as it relates to the instruction, first, we want to make sure that the materials that our staff has and that they use are representative of the children in front of them. So do children see themselves, see themselves often enough in the materials that their teacher uses? They may not see themselves every day, but often enough, right? Representation is important. Representation matters. Representation tells the learner that they are important and they are valued. That's the first portion of culturally, linguistically responsive learning and opportunities. Then the meaning-making, what does the educator do during the day with the child? Are they given opportunities, are children given opportunities to engage with learning in a way that aligns with their culture or their language? Often enough. Because again, not every day, not every moment. We are a very diverse community. There is no way that that's going to happen all the time, but we can be more intentional about that. So are they being, are we, are children see themselves represented in the materials? Are they given opportunity for meaning-making? And then finally, are they given opportunity to show what they know in a culturally, linguistically responsive way? Are there ample opportunities to show what I know from a child's perspective in more than one format and more than one language? Those are examples of culturally responsive policies and linguistically responsive policies that would be evident through this product evidence. So we develop it this year and we start the training on it this year. The KPIs that I'm recommending that will be part of my evaluation is, one, increase the percentage of students reporting rigorous and culturally responsive instruction. We want to hear from our youth. We would give a beginning of the school year baseline. So if the committee approves this, the baseline would be developed. And then we would show an improvement for, by the end of the school year. What my children say is very important to how we lead the district and we want them to be a part of this. The second goal, increase percentage of third graders, fifth graders, and eighth grade, Latino students, English learners, and students with disabilities who perform at or above benchmark in reading and math from the beginning of the school year till the end of the school year in terms of baseline. You might be asking why just those grade levels? Those are key grade levels as it relates to how children are progressing. The reason that those specific groups are called out is, one, because that's what is in the strategic plan. And two, if you'll recall from previous presentations last school year, these are the three groups of students that historically have not progressed in Worcester Public Schools like their peers. So if we look at it in the aggregate, we can show that the district is moving. But when we start to drill down and we start to see these groups of children not performing as well, then we really can't say that as a district, we're meeting the needs of all children. And I'll, I'll say finally, that our Latino youth make up nearly 50% of the student population. So if those children are progressing, then as a district, we rise together, right? And English learners, we have a lot of children who are new to the country, but we have a lot of children where this is the only country and city they've ever known and they are not doing as well as we know that they can. That is on us to train our staff, to support our staff, and then to help them to deliver that kind of instruction. And the same thing with our students with disabilities. So it may seem like this goal is not a lot, but it's actually a very heavy lift considering that historically, these are the groups of children that we, as a district, have not met the needs of in a, on a regular fashion. The final goal, the professional goal. So in the past, I had the professional goal be my completion of the NISIP program. And I am in my third year of NISIP. But I did not feel like the completion of that program is meaty enough to move the district. And so although I'll complete that program, I am not recommending that, that be my professional goal. Instead, this is another goal that is linked to equitable resources and educational programming. I chose specifically the language from the rubric that has to do with continuous learning. And again, it's underlined. Collaboratively nurture and model a culture in which there is an increase of staff who are reflective about their practice and use disaggregated student data, relevant research, and theory to continuously adapt instruction and improve outcomes with an intentional focus on historically underserved populations. So I'm hoping that you can hear the through line to the previous goal where we want the children in those groups that have historically not done as well to improve. And that happens because of what the adults do. So this goal is about the adult, the adult learning. And the evidence that I would like to provide in terms of product, we already have developed a data literacy self-assessment that we had our principals take. I would like to be able to show growth in that. I would like to be able to show the system-wide data literacy protocol for instructional leadership teams. We've had these in the past, we're improving upon them. I want to show what that looks like. And then rational outcomes. So these are the outcomes that we have developed as a district. I'm sorry. Rational outcomes are the outcomes that we have at each meeting when we bring people together. So I would show you how, when we bring principals together, what those rational outcomes are and how they're linked to this goal. When we bring assistant principals together, how they're linked to the goals. When we bring the deans together for their academy and when we bring the coaches together. So you start to see a link between how we're developing the adults around this, this continuous learning goal and how to use disaggregated data. Because again, how the adults do, then the children will, will rise to that occasion. You will see that the, the KPIs that I'm recommending, they may look familiar to you. That was not a typo, that was actually very intentional. I firmly believe that these two KPIs, the ones that were in the previous one, are extremely important to the overall growth of the district. When our children start to feel and see themselves reflective in the learning, I'm sorry, in the materials provided, given opportunity to make meaning with those materials as, as, in a way that they can see themselves and, and really wrestle with the work and demonstrate what they know. And then they, they will show more improved outcomes. And, and then the teachers and the principals can use that data to really continue to drill down and say, alright, how come my students are not improving in this particular area? What you, what are you doing as a third grade teacher to improve that? Because yours did better than mine. That's the power of professional learning communities. That's what this goal is about. This does not mean that only third, fifth, and eighth grade teachers will be working on this. We'll be doing this as a district. These are the areas that I'm recommending that we hone in on because again, as these groups of children move, then the district moves collectively. So those are my goals that I'm recommending. Let me just close out quickly with how kind of this all comes together in terms of Worcester Public Schools as a learning organization. So the next slide, the next few slides are reminders. This is our North Star for our children. We want all of our children to accomplish the skills and dispositions as it relates to the vision of a learner. This was approved by the committee last year. This is happening at our schools. We keep continuing to get better. But these are, this is what we want for the children. In order for this to happen for the children, the adults need to be working in a specific way. And so the next slide gets into this idea of systems improvement and what the adults do. When I started in Worcester Public Schools, I, we were up in that top corner of reacting to to, to problems at the district level. You could see that we were bumping into each other, trying to figure out how to, how do the adults work together so that children can excel? From there, we started to develop the systems and the necessary improvements. And so I'd say last year, we were at the early systematic approaches stage where the, the arrows were starting to align. This is the year we now have aligned approaches. That's that foundation that I spoke of at the beginning. Our staff knows where we're going. They may not know exactly what that's gonna look like, but that's what continuous learning is about. If, if we have to tell the adults what to do at every single point, then we're not honoring their, their professionalism and who they are. But we've got a lot of structures and supports in place. We're probably gonna stay in this aligned approach place for a couple of years. But these are the possibilities for acceleration so that we can get into those integrated approaches. So the next slide brings it all together. I've shown this to the committee, but it hasn't been for a while. So if it looks like a lot, I apologize. I'm, I'm gonna try to bring it back more and more. As a learning organization, we're in the center of it. In order for a learning organization to happen, it's what the adults do together. It's the mindset of the adults. And that is around the culture of a sense of belonging, authentic engagement, and building capacity, capacity and honoring knowledge. Those should not be new terms. We've talked about that in different ways. But this is what the mindset is of the district and where we continue to work further and deepen, deepen the work on. We do that through the systems of human systems, leadership development. So you heard me talk about what we do with the principals. We're now doing with our assistant principals, with our deans, and then our coaches. And continuous learning, that's developing the people. The organizational systems, shared accountability, we're in this all together. No one is solely accountable for this by themselves. I happen to be the one sitting up here right now. But I have a slew of very talented people that work with the children each and every day. And they're counting on us to provide them the tools to do that. And that includes the resource allocation. So we believe that this is the model by which Worcester Public Schools will become this and is continuing to become a learning organization. Not a top-down organization, but an organization that continues to learn from where we're at and where we wanna go. The next slide just goes deeper into how do we do that? This is how the adults work together. When we build each other's capacity, honor what we know, when we create a sense of belonging, which we spent the first two years spending a lot of time on that. And you feel it when you go into the schools now and you hear it when you talk to parents. That doesn't go away. We develop that, we continue to provide for that, and we authentically engage. When the adults do that, the systems get in place, the vision of a learner comes to be. So the next slide is our theory, that if we build systems and conditions that support schools and nurturing a culture that builds and honors capacity, ensures, ensures a sense of belonging and offers authentic engagement, then our schools will actualize the vision of a learner for all scholars. And our, the goals that I'm out, I've outlined are a piece of actualizing this. Next slide is just a quick, so how are we gonna do this this year is about connecting the through lines. If the learning only stays at the district office, it never gets to the classroom and the change will not happen. And so this image is about connecting what all the adults are learning so that it does get to the classroom level. But then also learning from our teachers, through our focused instructional coaches, through our educational educator teams, what we need to improve upon at the district level. So our principals get trained, our focused instructional coaches get trained, they work with the teachers' teams, the teacher teams bring it back up through their principals, and we continuously learn as an organization. In a school district, it's not only the children who are the learners. The adults are learners as well. And that is our responsibility to monitor that and to model that. And so I'll close with a few more slides just to give some images. So we have to have the courage to move forward. I started with the idea of looking back through the, the rearview mirror. And, and the image that I saw was very much the image that I would see driving home on a regular basis when I lived in California. And, and then when you look out the front of your, your window, you see a much broader image. That's the image that I want us to keep thinking about. What are the possibilities for Worcester Public Schools? I believe that when we start to lift up all of the children and the groups of children that historically have not done well, then we grow as an organization and we grow as a learning community. And we will accelerate the district collectively. And there will be times when it's going to look like this. If you click on that slide, one more click. When the, the front, no, go back. When, when you look out the front, it's gonna look like that, that pink sky out there. Now, if you lived in California, you know that when the sky looks like that, that means tomorrow's a scary day. And I'll tell you why it's a scary day. Because it's gonna be incredibly hot. It's gonna be triple digits, no question. What I said to, what I asked of my, my leaders this school year when school started is, I want you to have the courage to do it even when it's scary. Do it scared. Do it when it's going to be hot. Because at the end, we know that that's how we accelerate outcomes for children. And this is what I'm asking of us here, that we continue to lean in, consider the possibilities of our children, and, and do it even when you're scared. And so the final slides are just a reminder of, we think it's gonna be easy because we've got it all written down. And then the reality hits. How many different emails did you get today about different things going on in our district? Because we serve nearly 25,000 children and we serve nearly over 5,000 adults. There's a lot of people, a lot of squiggle that's going to happen. But we're gonna keep our eye on the goal of a vision of a learner and the way the adults work together to make this happen. Because at the end of the day, this is what we want for all of our graduates. Final slide. These are our possibilities for the community of Worcester, for the state of Massachusetts, for the nation of the United States. These are our kids and these are our possibilities. And so with that, I turn it back to you, Mayor Petty, for questions on my goals.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. We have Member McCullough, followed by Member Benanda. That's all I got.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I certainly appreciate the work that goes into this process and the goals that have been selected. Because I think we know these all continue to be very important things that the district needs to work on. When we talk about acquiring and retaining talent, I mean, that's something that goes on everywhere, right? But we know that it's something that we've continued to work on and how important that initial onboarding process is to getting people off to the right start. So I, I really do appreciate that that's part of this conversation. And knowing that people can come into this district, start off in one position, and then continue to grow, and knowing that they have those opportunities and how they can achieve them, I think is extremely important. And as far as the modernized and safe facilities, we've definitely seen some good growth with that process after we've begun to hire additional positions when we talk about facilities. I know that's something we've talked about in FOG and that has been talked about within the school community and the community as a whole, is there's more responsiveness already as far as people being able to address issues and resolve issues more quickly. But certainly, there's a lot of work left to do in that area. The question I have, when you're talking about some of the goals that you have, when we talk about metrics, and I know some of them can't have a number associated with them, so I'm assuming we'll get evidence, as you mentioned, for those. But when you do reference increasing percentages in several of these goals, is there a particular percentage range that you're looking at or something that you're hoping to achieve through the chair?
Madam Superintendent.
Through the chair. Thank you for the question. So historically, as I've looked back, we did not put a percentage last year. And it's my understanding, we have not done that in the past. Significantly, statistically significant is like 1% to 2%, which sounds, you know, to someone who's not a statistician, not a whole lot. So in my mind, it is, it's much more than that. Because a 2% increase in third grade would be about 30 students. That's not enough in my mind. But to say, because I, we don't know yet, we're still assessing at the beginning of the year where we are, to say exactly how much makes it challenging because of when we do the goals at this time. So happy to come back perhaps during the, the mid, the mid-cycle in December and give a, a goal there if that's what the committee selects. But another way to approach it would be to say, I always struggle with this, statistically significant percentage.
Absolutely. No, I, I would make a motion then at the mid-cycle evaluation, evaluation that we do have a conversation about that and percentages so that we have a better grasp on that once the assessments occur. And I certainly appreciate that because this is actually something in my daytime world that I work on a lot as part of my role with the acquiring, well, not so much acquiring, but how do we make sure that people feel valued at work? And we can't always do it percentage-wise, but showing growth is important. So assessing at the beginning and then assessing at the end so we can show that we've made some type of change in the positive direction is important. But I do think when we talk about percentages, having a better idea of that at the mid-cycle would be very helpful. And as far as the onboarding plan, is that something through the chair that is, there's an idea of already with that? Or is that something that's still being assessed? Is there some type of systems that we're gonna be looking at that would need to be considered by the committee through the chair?
Madam Superintendent.
Through the chair. I don't believe there's any additional systems as the committee needs it. We, we have some onboarding. What Dr. Koo and I have talked about is to create a model by which, no matter what your position is, you get to follow a, a certain type of experience. And that, that experience would change, of course, depending on your, your position. So that's what we're gonna come back with is, what would that experience look like?
No, I think that's great. Because I know right now, even with all the improvements that we've had in HR, there's still some disconnect there because not everything applies to every employee. And it's not a lack of HR not working on that or working with them. But sometimes it's things we don't even think about. So I think that's a really important goal. And with the equity budget process, you talked a little bit about how that looks. And I think what's really interesting is that you're talking about in your goals, not just the student impact, but how we're going to have our staff and our employees onboard when we're looking at those things. Because these goals really impact everyone. So you know, another layer of the equity. So I think that's really important and valuable. So at this time, I don't have any other questions other than my motion about the percentages at the mid-cycle. I thank you for the report and I look forward to all of us working together with you on these goals.
Thank you.
Thank you. Member Benanda.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. I'm also very concerned about the percentages. Superintendents are required to write SMART goals. And the SMART goals have to give a percentage. What, as I've written right now, you would not be able to fairly evaluate the superintendent on the goals because the percentages are not there. Now, also, for our principals and for our teachers, they are expected to write SMART goals also with percentages. So why would we not hold as high a standard for our superintendent? The four goals that were not met this year in the previous evaluation were percentages were not met. So superintendents are supposed to write SMART goals. And so I would also say that not waiting till the middle of the year, but so starting with goal one, increase, it has to be a percentage of new instructional staff and go all the way through those, a percentage is missing. Under modernized and safe facilities, the first goal, ensure maintenance and operation cost ratio to foundation budget allocation. Ensure is not an action word. That can be evaluated. That needs to be an action word. In KPI F2, five-two and five-three, about work order response time and work order completion time, I would suggest that those are goals, not for the superintendent, but for Brian Allen's evaluation since he is in charge of facilities. And his, that would fit under the expectation for his position. Under equitable resources and educational programs, again, you need a percentage of students reporting rigorously and culturally responsive instruction. My concern for that is that the students do not always know what rigorous and culturally responsive instruction is. And where this is, you're just beginning to discuss this with students. It doesn't seem like we have a very objective way of deciding if it's, how is instruction rigorous? That's a word that, you know, us adults struggle with. How do we actually evaluate what is rigorous instruction? I'm very concerned about KPI one, two. Increase what percentage of third, fifth, and eighth grade Hispanic, Latino students, English learners, and students with disabilities? Will be at above benchmark. The benchmark needs to be in there. What benchmark are we using? Again, this year, we did not make our benchmark in SARS. And also, reading and math from beginning of the school year, baseline, mostly all students increase from beginning of year to end of year. So we need to know exactly, what are we gonna use for that? And I recommend it's year-to-year and also student growth. The, let me go to the next one. This one is, oh, that was baseline. Oh, I think that is all, that's it. So my concern is the percentage needs to be in there. We require a superintendent to do SMART goals and the evaluate, nothing would be able to be evaluated in these goals without the percentages being included.
Who's got the hand up? Member Melem.
Through the chair to the superintendent. I know that there was discussion at the state level about like smartening up about SMART goals. So has there been any move to the future for our state of Massachusetts in terms of, just to kind of respond to?
Madam Superintendent.
Through the chair. There's not a, a formal at this point. There continues to be conversation. SMART goals are not required. They are, and as we've talked about previously, actually lead to a very low level of expectation. They are a form and they were very popular in the early 2000s. But over time, the research has shown that it actually doesn't propel an organization forward. It actually can hold it back. So like you only rise to that instead of pushing.
Everything that, that I've studied in terms of that kind of work is exactly, that is exactly the problem with SMART goals. And, you know, sometimes I think so much of what we're trying to achieve, we're held back by the state of Massachusetts and, and it frustrates me. And I think this process is an example of that. So I, as I read these, these goals, I felt like they felt real and that they were absolutely based on things that this district is worried about. I would also comment on facilities in particular. That has been, the whole responsiveness issue is a, is, is, is part of creating a culture, in my opinion. And I think you chose something that can have great, that can set a mindset, some of the words that you use in a culture around how we're gonna operate. And I do think that's your job. And I think that if those things don't happen underneath there, then I think we're, we're missing the boat in a great way. So I applaud the things that you chose to work on this year. Mid-goal, mid reports are good. I, I just think this state is so disappointing. And if they dump on us a budget like they did last time, I'd like to, I think I've said this before, give them a review of their performance. So thank you, Superintendent.
I found this report extremely interesting. Because when I look at progress, I wanna see how we're moving forward. So I'm looking for the measurements, but I don't see them here. So I do need to see percentages. I need, need to see some data, some real facts. And if we're going to be worried about missing the boat, my concern is that we're missing buying the ticket. And that is to the best education we can provide to all of our students. So when we look at proposed goals, we have a beginning, we have a middle, we perhaps have a three-quarter, and we have an ending. But there does have to be something there for me to look at as a school committee member to then be able to say, we've gone from here to here to here. And if we don't have that, then what would be the measurement? The measurement is, success only occurs when you are successful. The measurement is success only occurs when you are successful. So to measure the success would be a piece of what we need added into this. I'm also concerned because I, when we talk about safety, it's not just facilities, it's programs such as the Bully program. And that's simply one of them. The Alice program would be another. It would be monitoring that these programs continue in our schools. If it's not that specific program, then Plan B would be what program is going to replace those. I don't see that here as being monitored for our schools to continue to be safe. And along with that would be the concern with forms that are completed for the state of Massachusetts Desi. And those forms need to be completed correctly. So any paperwork that is forwarded, any reports that are sent to Desi to show the examples of what's occurring in the city of Worcester, under the Worcester Public Schools, is not mentioned in here either. And I have a concern with that. But that is all again measured and I don't see any measuring here. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Johnson?
Thank you to the chair. Superintendent Monarch, thank you for the report. As we continue to progress as a district and looking at, going back and looking at your first year here and some of the goals that we set forth as a school committee, well approved as a school committee and then into your second year. And now that the goals that you have set forth here, I'm actually, I'm actually pretty excited because I, I think I might've said this some last year at some point sometime in regards to especially the student goals, especially with our most needy student population to really hone in on that and diversifying our workforce and retaining that talent. And when I was thinking about this earlier, I wasn't sure where I was at with this report. I kind of wanted to hear how you actually tied it together and spoke about it because I, it was, I was trying to figure it out myself. And I think you articulated greatly where you're going with this, why you selected these goals, why these goals are important to our district, to the students we serve, the teachers we serve, the population we serve, right? So I, I think that's important. And what I also think is important about that is the fact that it still hasn't fallen on deaf ears with you. You have listened to what people have been saying all along since the first time you came in and you're continuing that process, moving along, which, which I find to be very important. You haven't started to sway away from what are, what we were looking for as a superintendent coming in, what the community was asking for, what parents and our educators and things were asking for. When you came in, you haven't moved from that a bit and I comming you on that as well. So again, I actually, and actually just briefly talking to Member McCullough about that, I actually support that motion on getting some statistics on that, measurable goals and along with kind of what Member Biancaria and Benanda were saying. I definitely think that's important. I am, I'm also a numbers guy as well, as far as whatever. So again, with the motion from Member McCullough, I'm in support of setting these goals and moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And just want to thank superintendents for the report, public participation, the school committee comments and pretty good comments. And I just want to, I'm going to make a motion to approve these goals. I think they're well done, well thought out. And with that, support Member McCullough's motion to, for the mid-cycle and also some of the other comments made here tonight. And because we all have the same goals, make sure our students, our scholars are given the opportunity to succeed here, given the educators the right tools to make them succeed. And, and these aren't easy goals. We've been trying to do the acquire and retain talent for how many years? And we made some progress last year. I expect, it's, this isn't easy work. It's not easy work, especially be when you compete against Boston or some of the other states that surround us. It's, it's hard to acquire talent. But I think with the leadership we have here, the more people talk about Worcester and what's going on, I think it'd be somewhat easier, but not completely easier. So I do appreciate what you're doing there. And regarding safe facilities, modernized, you know, we're still well behind, behind in that, you know? We're making progress. I think you put the right people in charge of that. And it comes down, and that one, some, some respect comes down to a lot of funding, right? And so it's just not on superintendent or the school committee, it's on the council, it's on the state, and which you say here from state, local and federal resources. Student learning goal, resources and education programs, equity-based walkthrough tools, equity-based addendum for culturally, logistically, sustainably, I'm sorry, sustaining practices. I agree with this one too. And it's such a different atmosphere, I think, over the last couple of years in the, in the community. It's that it, it brings people together and more than it has in the past. I'm talking not just six years ago, 12 years ago, way back. And it's been, and I think it's by distributional spending time in the community with parents and students, bringing students in, advisory groups and bringing parents into the neighborhoods, makes a difference. The principals reaching out, it brings the whole temperature of the city down. I don't know if I said that right, but it just makes it more conducive to people who can actually have discussions and they don't have to agree. I'm not going to agree, but I wouldn't be interested if everybody agreed, right? So I do appreciate what you're doing there. It's made a difference. And so I'm going to move that we accept these goals and look at mid-cycle, see if it puts them, as suggested by the other school committee members, where we go with this. Because at the end of the day, it's going to be a lot of the outcomes, we're going to see what happens when we see some of the scores, when we see, when we see the state requirements are met. And we'll see, and everybody, and the whole public will see that. So it's not like we're hiding anything. So, and we're going to bring this all forward to the school committee. And, and just the, when you change the atmosphere, I think, of the city of the schools, that's a big step forward. When you go into the school and the educators are positive, the leadership is positive, the students are positive, it makes a difference. It makes it somewhat easier to, for the students, but a little bit, but it's going in the right direction. So I, I think this is important, a point that we all work together, respect one another on the school committee and listen to one another. So, thank you. So we have a motion to approve along with Member McCullough's motion, roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancaria?
We're in a roll call, go ahead, roll call. Okay, go ahead.
The question is, is it on the motion or the report?
You want to take them separately? Yeah?
Yes.
Okay, you can do it separately. So taking on the report, roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancaria?
No.
Member Benanda?
No.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
No.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. On Member McCullough's motion, roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancaria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes. Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. Okay, we are moving on. We are on report, the Standing Committee on FOG in the City Council, in the City Council Committee on Education. Member McCullough?
Thank you. So FOG met with the Education Committee from the City Council and there were two items that pertained or correlated to our agenda. And those items, sorry about that. Let's get to this page. Where GB 4-8, which was the Greater Worcester Research Bureau, where we received a presentation regarding building the future, investing in Worcester Public Schools. And that motion was to file and it was approved by the committee. The next item is GB 2-5, 6.5, which was the librarian item. And we had that on the agenda because it was a correlating item. So Member Biancaria made a motion to explore relationships between WPS and local colleges for student library access. And that motion was approved, as well as the motion to hold. And that concluded the portion of the school committee as part of the joint meeting.
We'll take those items collectively? Roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancaria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. Okay, we are on approval of grants and financial items, item N. If everybody's all set there, we're going to take those collectively. Member Benanda?
Just a quick question. On the vocational salary adjustments, why didn't they get them as we were going through the year? Why is it now that we have the $74,000 payment?
Through the chair, if you recall, we actually, I believe it was the last meeting in June that we had approved all of those. So as we were completing them through the summer, we were putting them on the agenda for the retro pay.
Oh, I see. That was the agreement through the union, is that right?
That is correct, through the chair.
And how about on the elementary class size stipends? Was that somebody that we forgot to pay?
Through the chair, that is correct. We were looking at those spreadsheets and we did a re-vetting of that. And so we just wanted to make sure people got what they deserve to get.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll take those collectively and a roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancaria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. Okay, next up is consider renaming of St. Casimir's to the St. Michael O'Neill Program at the alternative school. We'll send that to, Member McCullough?
I'm fine if that does need to go to FOG. I didn't know if that was just something that could be approved tonight, but if it has to go to FOG, that's fine. My only question through the chair would be that if this is approved and the program does end up moving to another building, that that continues on to the next building. So that that continues to have that dedication as part of their arts wing. Thank you.
Ma'am Superintendent?
Through the chair. So in, to your first question, we put it on for FOG. It would be, we thought that if the committee wanted to approve it on the floor, that would be, we're still trying to figure out the, the naming process. And then, so that would be the committee's purview. The sec, that is, the, to your second point about if the building is moved, which most likely it will be, very much why we, it would, it would go with it because it doesn't matter where it is happening. They want to make this one hallway. And if you see the way they've set the school up, they've purposely reorganized even where the teachers are and where this creative space is.
I just, just want to read something here. This is from Mike O'Neill. It says, "My sincere thanks to former school committee member Laura Clancy for introducing this motion and for recognizing the importance of supporting students at the alternative school as they strive to achieve their goals and contribute to our community. The work at this sub-separate state licensed day school for students with identified special needs has always been a team effort. Students, staff, caregivers and community partners coming together to support middle and high school students in developing resilience for job and life skills. I want to extend my gratitude to everyone I have the privilege of working with. It's been an honor to serve as an educator and public servant to the youth and families of the city for 46 years. However, my focus at the alternative school was never on the arts, but on vocational and life training. I ask that for the alternative school, you review the current vocational program, update the program equipment and job skills focus to align what is needed for students to be prepared to work in the current and anticipated job market." So I'd like to make a motion that the wall or, or actually a program be started at, what's called the Worcester Alternative School now, in that the focus be on vocational training for students and job employment in the community. And that we do call it the Dr. Michael O'Neill Vocational Program. Thank you.
Member Mailman?
Thank you. Through the chair to the superintendent. I think that you taught, when we talked about program last week at the alternative school, you mentioned some of the vocational elements that will be at, being added to the program. Am I recalling that correctly?
Through the chair, that is correct. This, they have brought in, goodness, I'm not going to use the right term. There's a sound studio that they've put in place and I think it connects to radio, media, looking at Mr. Kristone's vocational. It doesn't, it's not Chapter 74 approved, but it is preparing youth in that. They have a business entrepreneurial piece, they're bringing, they're trying to link it all together. So a lot of the children there are very creative in their, in their spirit and they use the, the art setting, the, the radio, media, and then the entrepreneurship, which is the business to like, how would they launch their own business? Whether that be through music, through poetry, through painting, in that, that creative space. So the, the school has spent a lot of time around that. They also use it as a way to help the children self-regulate and, and manage whatever might be going on in the world and develop that resiliency. So it's this combined, very intentional approach to meeting the needs of the youth that they serve.
And through the chair, I think the, there was a printing press or something that was happening there as well. There was something else going on, but regardless-
A 3D, I think there is a 3D.
Regardless of what, I mean, it's clear that the district is moving to a mindset of vocational whenever we can do it. And I, I would make a motion that we actually approve what was brought before us as presented by the people that work in the school. And in honor of his work over the many years. And I think that it seemed to me a thoughtful process. This is what the school has recommended. So I'd make a motion and support that we approve that tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. So we're going to make a motion to approve the renaming of St. Casimir's to Dr. Michael O'Neill Program at the alternative school. And, what's that?
That was the original.
Oh, that's the original description. Okay, so we, the amended description, we will approve. Roll call. Can you ask the questions before we go into a roll call? Otherwise, I'm not going to recognize that people anymore. Go ahead, Mr. Biancaria. I make cues, I look this way all the time.
The reason I raised my hand prior to saying we were going to have a roll call is, so I understand this correctly. Dr. O'Neill wrote a letter and said that he isn't, doesn't want to be involved, have this piece of it naming after him? So perhaps the letter needs to be looked at in FOG because I'm not quite sure how this is working out. Because if we wanted to name something after someone, wouldn't we want them to want that to occur? And it doesn't seem like it does. So I- And it doesn't seem like it does, so I, my motion would be to have this go back to FOG and have a discussion in reference to it, so we can then make a determination, so it's positive all the way around, because he did give a lot, and he did spend many years with us, and I don't want to be disrespectful to him as far as what his choices would be.
Member McCullough?
Thank you for letting me speak again. I wouldn't have an issue with sending this to FOG just so we could go over the reasons and the rationale that the school community did select the arts as opposed to something vocational, because maybe there are some adjustments in the school, but respectfully, out of the consideration of the naming, I would be okay, so we can reiterate, you know, why it was chosen, so we can move forward with something.
Okay, so the motion is to send it to committee, both items? Committee does. So the motion is sent to committee, which takes precedent over the item itself. Roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancaria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
No.
Member Mailman?
No.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Member McCullough, to hold joint means between FOG and the City Council Committee of Education on topics of mutual interest, refer that to FOG. Those in favor? Opposed, so ordered. To pick a delegate to represent the Worcester School Committee at the MAS-C Resolution Meeting of the MAS-C, MAS-S Joint Conference in November. Motion is to approve. Anybody want to go? Member McCullough?
Thank you, Mayor Petty, I'm unable to go. I'm nominating Member Mailman as our delegate.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, motions to approve. Roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancaria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Like I said, a timer, five minutes to speak on items, potential five minutes if granted by the chair, send that to FOG. Member Mailman?
I'd like to withdraw that item.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion to withdraw. All those in favor, opposed, so ordered. I don't know, I thought it was a good one. Okay. Consider the addition of Chapter 74 state-approved vocational technical education programs at Burncoat High School. Member Guardiola?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just ask that we also have a discussion to update the admission policy for Worcester Technical High School, and I request that be referred to TLSS as well, please.
Okay, along with the item itself. Okay. Member Mailman?
Thank you. I was happy to see that, you know, I certainly don't understand the process that we'll go through, but we're very early in that we're being thoughtful about making sure that we give Burncoat every opportunity to have as full programming as possible, so I'm happy to support and excited about this, too. So, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Member McCullough, followed by Member Biancaria.
Thank you. I was just going to say the same thing of Member Mailman, and I know that Principal Ewick is here tonight as well from Burncoat, and I think this is a really exciting opportunity for us to look at what the future holds for the new Burncoat, and how those Chapter 74 programs are going to come into play. I read through the report and some of the backup with some of the potential opportunities, and really how it's, you know, when we talk about future-ready students, and when we're looking at agriculture and horticulture, and our automotive, and a lot of the other trades, just the opportunities that could be for this possible, that it will be possible for this new building. So I look forward to learning a lot more about that and what this building will hold. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I'm looking forward to this. I think this is, we have two spectacular schools that are just open, but, Member Biancaria, hold my comments, the, roll call.
Roll those drums. What I just, I just wanted to make a couple of comments, a couple of weeks ago, we had a meeting, the superintendent and I talked about the success of Chapter 74 at Burncoat, and what we would like to see occur. So, I look forward to what the community and the students bring to the table as far as what their interest would be, because a Chapter 74 state-approved program not only brings in additional money under our Worcester Public Schools per student, but it also provides exceptional experiences for our kids, and it can also make someone or break someone's career as far as what they're deciding on, what they like and what they don't like. So I hope we do some, whether it be surveys, or ask students that are presently enrolled in Burncoat, what they feel as though would be interesting to them, maybe some community meetings in reference to that, but I hope that we can make that one of the highlights of what we are going to be doing at Burncoat, because I feel as though, many, many years ago, when I worked on the programs for Dougherty High School, they had followed through, and years later, we still see success in how we can build off of those programs. So, I look forward to those community meetings, and certainly feel as though the Chapter 74 piece is vital to our success as a full system. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Superintendent?
Through the chair, I want to also, Principal Ewick is here, and just really thank him and his leadership, and Mr. Foley, for looking ahead. I want to thank Mr. Kristonas for really taking a look at the whole district, and where are the pieces that we have, potential replication that we don't need, but also where do we need redundancy, because there is a student interest in working closely with Mr. Waymouth, the principal over at Worcester Tech, and learning how they do things, and just how do we systematize. He made it very, he really was emphasizing the importance of the student voice, and finding out what children are interested in. We don't want to put a program in place, and then nobody wants to be in it, and that's a waste of fiscal resources. And yet, this is something that we have to plan for, you know, five to seven years out, right? So it is definitely a balance, but I, too, am looking forward to getting this off the ground, and what can be provided for Worcester Public Schools youth, and I found some additional high schools that we can go take a look at, too, that I was sharing with Mr. Kristonas, so a lot more to come on this, but a great opportunity for the community. Thank you.
Okay. Member Benanda?
I'm also happy to see this increase in Chapter 74 for Burncoat. They used to have a horticultural program there, and so that would be natural for them to also continue to explore that. So my question is, are we still saying that Burncoat is maybe seven years out in order to build a new Burncoat?
The usual timeframe for your schools, we just built, well, South High School's about six years, yeah, so you're talking about six years or so.
So, four of these, so we only can have four, or you have to have that rotation, right, of the classes, so four of these will be picked for that. Is there a possibility that we can have some of these up and running prior to the opening of the new Burncoat?
Madam Superintendent?
Through the chair, Burncoat is bursting at the seams as it is with the existing body, student body. They have some elements that they have, like makeshift, I don't know, Mr. Ewick, if you want to come and talk a little bit about what they already have in place, but to have a full-scale Chapter 74 at this time would be, there literally is no space at that school. But I have been in their auditorium, boy, they have done some, what they can do in that auditorium. Turn it over to you, Mr. Ewick.
Who's up first, Mr. Ewick? Okay. Is your microphone on? Is the green light on there?
See? First time for everything, right? Good, I have a second go at it. We do have two programs, automotive, it's a pathway at the moment, and that's one of the Chapter 74 possibilities that we're going to explore, as well as digital media, which does tie in, I believe, to the arts and communication services, the graphic designs, visual communications, or the multimedia broadcasting production, that's one of the areas, so we have two currently pathways.
Mayor Petty?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you get Patriots don't stop another hour, so we're pretty good here. I look so forward to this project, and I know how you make it better between South High, Dougherty High, but you have the opportunity to make this a state-of-the-art school, especially when you want to focus on vocational, on the arts, in the arts, that's where the focus should be. I know we have to have discussions with MSBA, but we shouldn't shy away from those discussions with the MSBA when we have a vision of what we want to do, and maybe we can work with them, and the principal, and Mr. Foley, you can create your own vision over the next few, you only have a few months to do it, so, but the committee should be meeting soon on this, and as we did for South High School, as we did for Dougherty High School. It's about, as you know, it's about a six-year project, starting from last year, and if the middle school is approved at the end of this year, which I have a good feeling that hopefully it will be, that piece of property is large, it's probably, probably somewhat even bigger than South High School in some respects, South is slightly shaped differently, but you can do a lot with the athletic fields, with the schooling, move the buildings around, and really develop how you want to see it. Now, you've been up there, Mr. Foley and Mr. Ewick, you've been up there for a number of years, so you know what needs to be changed to make it all work. And so I'm looking forward to this, I really am, and we're all, hopefully we'll all be still here when we open it up. Anyways, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All set?
Want to send that to FOG?
TLC.
Oh, TLC, I'm sorry. Okay. Just have the say in it, I guess, so. Okay, all those in favor, opposed, so ordered. Next is review the report on applying agreed-upon procedures to an activity fund testing for fiscal years ending June 30, 2022, and June 30, 2023. Recommendation is to send to FOG. All set? All those in favor? Opposed, so ordered. Okay, then we have the Standing Committee announcements. So they enjoy their weekend, and so we have a motion to adjourn. All those in favor? Opposed, so ordered.